Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular city council meeting for January 27. It being 5:30, I would like to call this meeting to order. Please all rise for the pledge of allegiance being led by Mr. John Abel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Abel. I am going to ask Madam Clerk to call the roll. Or do you want us to go ahead and sign in on here?
Yes.
Sign in on here?
Yeah.
Do you want everyone to know that Mr. Onkin will be a little late here tonight? I believe we can. It being 6-0, we have a quorum, we will conduct business. Chair, would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda, please.
Mayor, I move the agenda be approved as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Orick and second by Ms. Hoheimer. Is there any comments or questions about the agenda before we start? Counsel, take your vote, please. Motion passes 6-0. Chair would now entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes, please.
Mayor, I move 4.1, the city council regular meeting of January 13, 2025, at 5:30 p.m. And 4.2, the city council special meeting of January 17, 2025, at 4:00 p.m. be approved.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Orick and second by Ms. Hoheimer. Any questions or comments from counsel on these two minutes? Counsel, take your vote, please. Motion passes 6-0. We have now come down to public input. Anyone in the audience wishing to have their voice heard, please come to the podium. Make sure that the mic is on. State your name. And I want everybody to know there's a little sheet of paper there. If you have a direct question, we don't interrupt your five minutes that you have. So if you have a direct question, we will make sure that it gets to the city manager and then he will get it to the correct department to answer your question. So anyone from the audience wishing to have their voice heard? There's a button.
Good evening.
Perfect. And you have to state your name.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and city staff. I'm Chris Hilton. I'm the current president of Pure Area Association of Realtors.
Welcome.
Thank you. On behalf of PAR and its almost 800 members, I appreciate the opportunity to provide a comment on the ordinance on your agenda tonight requiring registration of properties that are vacant or foreclosed. Since October of last year, we've been working with your staff trying to ensure this ordinance does not have any unintended consequences on homeowners involved in foreclosure. Our meeting with the city staff were important since it is a complicated issue and working with properties in pre-foreclosure and foreclosure. During this time, homeowners still have an opportunity to renegotiate or to reinstate or redeem the loans that are secured on their property. We appreciate the work on this ordinance and the opportunity to continue to provide feedback. We believe we are close to a version of that ordinance which we can support. However, we still have concerns with the definition of foreclosed properties since it captures those properties which may be occupied. Realtors have expertise in this area of real estate and know that banks will not do anything on a property while it is still occupied. That means that the bank will not conduct maintenance of any kind. It can take up to a year sometimes to go through that process of eviction. I just had a Freddie Mac foreclosure. It took us five years to evict the occupants. In these situations, the occupants, in these situations, the banks will pay all the liens on the property that accumulates during the time so that a lien-free deed can be transferred to a potential buyer. Therefore, it's our recommendation that in the definition of foreclosed property that you remove the words "whether vacant or occupied" and replace that with vacant/foreclosed. We also believe that the registration fee of $300 every six months is excessive for these properties. Additionally, in terms of enforcement of the ordinance, how will the city proceed if a bank has repossessed the property and is working on listing the property with a local Realtor? It's our understanding that neighboring communities do not require the bank to register those properties during that time period. We believe Pekin should do the same. Thank you for your continued engagement. As the ordinance is currently drafted, PAR is not yet able to support it. We would like to be able to do this with the amendments that I've just stated. Given these concerns, PAR respectfully asks for a deferral of this ordinance until the issues have been raised can be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Cameron Betten. I'm the executive director for the Pekin Park District. I'd just like to make a comment about our ground mount solar array project. We, as a park district, have few means to generate revenues and taxes. We live by property taxes. We do get some funds through the personal property replacement tax, but that fluctuates year in and year out. And the only other way that we generate revenue is through memberships, program fees, you know, entry fees into our facilities. So we're always looking at ways on how we can cut costs and save taxpayer dollars. So several years ago, a couple of years ago, we started looking at solar for our park site fitness facility and our arena facility. And through our initial processes, we were looking at, you know, possibly putting them on the roofs. But due to the age of our roofs, it was not cost-effective to put them up on our roofs because, one, either we would have to replace them or, two, we could, you know, put the solar panels on the roof, but because of the brackets, we would be taking chances on whether or not they would be able to sustain and, you know, hold up, you know, the solar panels and then possible, you know, leaking, you know, of the roof. So we were afraid to put solar panels up and then have to take them down and put new roofs up later. And then we realized too that, well, then we started looking at the ground mount over on the, what we call the north fields. And currently, we only use, the area that we're looking at is specialty event parking. The Cross Country does use that. And we've already talked with them and there should not be any impact on that. We've talked with Marigold Festival and we'll move, you know, any parking or storage of trailers, you know, for vendors to where we used to have soccer fields by the depot. But as we were looking at the ground mount, we realized that we were going to be able to have full coverage of our facilities, whereas if we would have done it on the roofs, we would not have full solar coverage. And therefore, the savings would not have been as much on the roof. And so the ground mount solar basically is going to be saving us about $200,000 a year. In our report, you can see, you know, over, you know, 15-year period, we could have $1.5 to $2 million savings. And just this last year, for the arena, we spent $137,000 on electric. And for park site fitness, it was just a little over $60,000. With those savings, you know, we'll be able to put some monies back into park site fitness over time. We'll be able to put more money into the arena over time. And we'll also be able to do more things in Mineral Springs Park, you know, with some of that savings too. So, you know, it's a crucial project for us in order to provide savings to the district and to the taxpayers. So I hope you consider it moving forward. We've had good relationships with the city over the years. We just partnered to get the splash pad done. I know this isn't a partnership, but I hope you, you know, look at that, look at it like that. So please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Zoe Carter. I am the executive director of the Rural Equality Project here in Pekin. And I am actually here to speak on the ordinance that you're looking on passing pertaining to the homeless community in our community. I know we've had some issues before and we've gone through different ways to help them out, to try to get them off the streets and into permanent housing. But this ordinance that you're looking at passing, not only is it going to put more drain on the city, the police officers with trying to get them, you know, off the streets, but it will also, I mean, you're looking at possibly up to $500. These people don't have $500 to pay fines to get off the streets. So then at that point now, we are having taxpayers are going to have to fund them in the jails, taking care of them in the jails and getting them off the streets. So not only is it going to cost more money for the taxpayers, it's also just inhumane. It's inhumane to try to force these people off the streets when all they're trying to do is to get off the streets. No one wants to be homeless. Not a single person does. And doing this is just not right. So I really, really hope that you look at that and you're looking kindness to your hearts and you think about changing this and not moving forward to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to have their voice be heard? Seeing or hearing none, public comment or input is now closed. Chair would entertain a motion for item 6, which is consent agenda, please.
Mayor, I move the following items on the consent agenda be approved. 6.1 Accounts payable to be paid proofless through January 17, 2025. 6.2 Financial reports of December 2025. Ordinance number 4268-24/25 approving a variance for Illinois American Water for the property located at 328 Broadway Street to reduce the minimum rear building setback from 10 feet to 2. 6.4 Ordinance number 4269-2425 approving a special use for Robinson Outdoor LLC for the construction and operation of an off-premises electronic multiple message board at 3405 Court Street. 6.5 Ordinance number 4270-24/25 approving site plan for Pekin Park District for the construction and operation of a ground mount solar array on the property near the intersection of Stadium Drive and North Parkway Drive. 6.6 Ordinance number 4271-24/25 approving a first amendment to the ground lease agreement with Sunny Pasture Solar LLC to clarify the leased area. 6.7 Ordinance number 4272-24/25 approving a third amendment to the Pekin Court Street Tax Increment Financing District Agreement with the Center for Prevention of Abuse to extend the deadline for development planning. 6.8 Receiving file registration of Sharon Church from the Pekin Housing Authority Board with regret and appreciation for her service. 6.9 Resolution number 227-24/25 approving the mayor's appointment of Deborah Sue Graham to the Pekin Housing Authority Board for a term of five years until January 14, 2030 be approved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Orick and second by Mr. Abel. Sorry, are we good? I thought I heard him first. Any comments, questions, or concerns about the consent agenda?
Yes. I would like to make a request that 6.5 be pulled off the consent agenda and moved to new business as 8.8.
Madam Clerk, did you get that information?
Yes.
Okay. So it's 6.5 and to be moved to new business as 8.8. Counsel, take your vote, please. Motion passes 5-1. We have now come down to item 7, unfinished business, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance number 4242-24/25 requiring the registration of properties that are vacant or foreclosed be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Nutter and second by Mr. Orick. Mr. Dossie.
Thank you, Mayor. As counsel recalls, when this was up the last time, several meetings ago, we were given direction to meet with the PAR people to work on the language, which staff did. We had some significant back and forth as far as some changes and suggestions that they had. It just became apparent that there was going to be a little bit of concern on some of this language that they recommended. And I'm going to have Nick McQuett speak a little bit on that of what those concerns are and what he knows about what some of the other communities are doing as well with similar ordinance. So I'll pass it on to Nick.
Mr. McQuett.
Yep. So I wasn't at the last meeting. This came before you. Mr. Ray took good notes. I reviewed the video and we made the changes that counsel requested in the ordinance that's before you. One of PAR's requests was to lower the registration fee. Currently, in this ordinance, it is at $300. I believe that to be fair as this would be outsourced to a third party, which is done the same way in East Fiori and other municipalities. I believe East Fiori is right around $300 as well, so it's right in line with what their registration fee is. Some of the concerns, again, PAR brought up that the city would be able to recoup any money via lien. Staff's position is the city shouldn't be incurring those costs from the get-go and just put that right onto the banks and the mortgage companies.
Yeah, just a couple other, I mean, the biggest, the last thing that we are kind of in disagreement on, which first of all, I want to thank PAR, you know, they came in, they were very reasonable. We had really good discussions with them and I think we did make the ordinance better. The last kind of piece that we disagree on is that post-foreclosure, once the banks or mortgage company or whoever actually owns the property, that's, you know, for our purposes, that's the owner of record. And at some point, somebody needs to be responsible for maintaining those properties. And this is kind of exactly the situation that this ordinance is meant to deal with, which is those properties that just get to limbo and then nobody takes care of them and the banks are headquartered out of somewhere and we end up not having good property maintenance and we end up incurring a lot of costs. So that's one area that staff does, you know, respectfully disagree and think that counsel should go ahead and approve the ordinance as written where the bank, at the time that they own the property after foreclosure, should be responsible for maintenance. And if they're not willing to, then, you know, we will, we will have to continue to do work and we will lien the property and take them through code enforcement procedures just like we would any other entity. I think that's the crux of it. I mean, counsel discussed this at its last meeting too. And like Mr. McQuett said, we did update some of the changes that counsel member Orick and some of you requested, so.
Josh, can I ask you? If a house is in foreclosure and someone is living in it, are we finding that those properties are not being cared for and that that's causing a blight on the city, costing us money? Or is it mainly the empty ones?
It's a combination of both. I know there's a property we're dealing with today that's been in foreclosure for four years. And, you know, we have substantial costs incurred there. I know that previous owner or the owner has listed just recently left that property, but the city has been maintaining, you know, mowing or fixing fences, things of that nature, so.
Okay.
That is an interesting kind of situation, right? Because there might be liens on a property and then once foreclosure starts, it's kind of a limbo period. And originally, the original ordinance did have where as soon as the foreclosure process was initiated, that's when the registration fees and the whole process for this started. PAR pointed out, you know, again, we think for that, that would just put burden on people that maybe could get out of foreclosure and we'd be adding, you know, $300 twice a year to the payments that they would have to pay off. So we understood that, we backed that off. And now it's just post-foreclosure. Once the bank actually owns the property, that's when this would start.
So there's only one fee, $300? Or is it $300 twice a year or twice a period or what?
Semi-annual.
Twice a year?
Twice a year.
So total 600.
Annually.
Okay.
And you've checked with other cities? I don't know if people can hear me. And you've checked with other cities of this being similar?
Yes.
Counsel, do you have any comments that you'd like to give us on this?
You know, I, oh, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Thank you. I think that the comments from Nick and Mr. Ray are well-taken. I certainly have some personal experience dealing with this sort of distressed properties like this and there's all kinds of things that can happen that if you allow for every permutation, you know, you wouldn't, we could, we could go on forever. And so I think what they're doing is more than sufficient. I guess the question would arise if someone is in foreclosure and they have issues like this. For the 350, you're not going to have the city come out and mow the lawn, for instance. So I presume fines and everything could go on top of that. So that may be something to consider, maybe some, they would have to take it on a case-by-case basis. And I think overall, you've accommodated enough, it sounds like, that you should be fine. My office has vetted this, so I have nothing further to add, just in those general remarks.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I have another question. I know that I'll use a business, Rocket Mortgage, for example. So anything that's out of town currently, do you guys have trouble reaching out or getting any responses from them?
Yes.
And if so, if you know percentage-wise, local versus non-local, is there, do you have any clue?
I do not.
Okay. But you're having trouble with out-of-town mortgage lenders, et cetera? That leads me into a thought about code enforcement, et cetera, et cetera. So if you can't get ahold of them and they don't respond, we can't just let the property keep either deteriorating, all the code enforcement issues that go along with it. We need to get a handle on it. And we've tried to get a handle on it and have, for the most part. So this is just another reassurance to make that happen, so.
Mr. Orick, I believe you had a question.
Yeah, a couple. To follow up with Mr. Nutter's, I'm thinking this is kind of similar to our liquor code enforcement, that we don't allow a company to have the liquor license in their name. We have to have an individual. Do we have to have some kind of register with the internet companies so we have a contact person and name that's going to be responsible, like we do with our local liquor license?
Are you asking if we're going to require a local person?
Yes, like we do with our liquor license.
Yes, that would be.
I'm talking about Rocket Mortgage. I'm talking about the out-of-town ones. Do we have contact, that we don't have to contact an LLC in New York City?
Right. I mean, so it's part of the whole purpose of this is so that we have all that information in one spot. So if there's an issue, we could try to address it with that local person prior to having to go out and do the work, you know, just try to get done by a phone conversation.
Okay. And this, this doesn't apply to commercial property then, just for owner occupied?
It applies to commercial property.
Okay.
Again, you have to meet the evidence of vacancy, which is ill-defined.
Well, just knowing the history of selling commercial property, it's nothing for commercial property to be on the market for two years. That they're going to have to pay $300 every six months for their commercial property to stay on this?
So, Mr. Orick, that is a concern that, you know, PAR also brought up on the residential side as well. In the ordinance, it defines what it means to be a vacant property. If a property is, you know, there's conditions of vacancy, basically. So it leads a reasonable person to believe that the property is unoccupied by persons legally in possession thereof. Such conditions include, but are not limited to, overgrown or dead vegetation, delinquent property taxes, past utility notices or bills, disconnected utilities, accumulation of trash or junk, abandoned vehicles, you know, all of these things. So it's not, if there's a property that's on the market and the tenant or the landlord is taking care of it or the building owner is taking care of it, there's no reason that it would cause an evidence of vacancy and therefore would not have to register. And furthermore, in the definitions in this ordinance, it also states that a vacant property is not a property currently under construction with a valid permit or currently listed for sale by an Illinois licensed real estate agent. So as long as they're doing, maintaining the building and they've got it marketed and it's on the market for two years, fine. It's not going to be subject to this.
Okay.
Right. So, and I would add, same thing with like a multi-family building. So, you know, if you have four apartments and one goes empty, we're not going to request that to register.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Who's, Nick, are you going to be the registering?
Yeah.
Person in charge of all this then?
So it'll fall under my department. And again, we, you know, if approved, we would look to go out to a third party to kind of maintain the registry. And I would add, with the registry, the way the other communities have done this is, it's really, there's no cost out of pocket to the city. So you charge that registration fee and the third party would essentially take a percentage of that.
One other question, Nick, since you brought up other cities, how successful have they been in addressing this spited property?
So I've talked with a few different communities and, you know, it's worked pretty well for the surrounding communities. It's quite, quite big up north as well. So I think, again, this is just another tool for us to combat these problem properties.
I think you use the word as tool or, I think this is a great start to helping us clean up our beautiful city. So I appreciate the work and effort that's gone into it. Are you okay?
Anyone else from counsel? Counsel, take your vote, please.
Motion passes five-one. Give her just a moment. She's got to go take some coughs, or to stop that cough.
Five years ago, I cleared the house.
No kidding.
Yeah. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you for that quick pause. We are now down to item eight, which is new business. Chair would entertain a motion for eight point one, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move that ordinance number forty-two seventy-three dash twenty-four slash twenty-five, amending chapter two, article six, division ten of the Pekin City Code regarding zoning board of appeals, providing compensation for zoning board of appeals members, be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Nutter and second by Mr. Orick. Mr. Dossie?
Thank you, Mayor. In essence, this is a request by staff to consider compensation to the ZBA members, fifty dollars per meeting that'll help ensure the quality, membership, attendance, and activity. Staff has planned to budget $4,200 to cover this, these compensation costs for the regular scheduled meetings and an additional 700 in compensation for any unexpected special meetings that may occur through the fiscal year for a total of 4,900 that would be planned into the fiscal year '26 budget. Attendance at these meetings are going to be, would be recorded by the zoning administrator on the attached form provided by the finance department. And after the completion of the meeting, the zoning administrator shall provide the attendance report to the finance department for issuance of payment. I'll have Nick McQuaid speak a little bit more on this.
Mr. McQuaid?
So, staff came up with this idea, which is kind of the norm in a lot of other communities, to kind of, you know, get our zoning board members further engaged. They do have to spend a lot of time on these cases, be it going out, you know, to the properties, researching the code. So in essence, we're, you know, trying to compensate for that time. I haven't found any other local communities that are doing this. Again, other communities up north are, already have enacted this. I have discussed this with the zoning board members and they're either way. So there's no, nobody against it, nobody truly for it at this point, so. Right. As well as, the zoning board is quasi-judicial, so they are different than our other committees.
Counsel?
I know I've served on the Sheriff's Merritt Commission for a few years, and if I recall correctly, we were compensated fifty dollars a meeting for those. And I know the mayor was, and that there's quite, I don't know how many other committees that the county does pay for, for the members to come in. But I, I think this is something that we need to do because this probably would just meet their expenses on doing everything, to look at the property and do everything and just show them that we appreciate their work, and I will support this.
Thank you. Mr. Nutter, I believe you had a question?
Yes. I got a concern, two concerns. Will these people, or the members, going to be part-time employees? Or are they going to be contract employees?
They, they will be W-2 employees.
W-2 employees?
Correct.
Is there a potential of any legal complications for members being on the board and also potentially having an impact on anything that comes before the zoning board? Now, logically, they should be abstaining from the vote, if that's the case. But I just want to make sure that we don't have a, any legal things that could come up out of that. Because we've got members on there right now, one's on the county board, one is also works for a local contractor and is on multiple boards throughout the county. I just want to make sure, I'm not opposed to paying them, but I want to make sure we don't get into a tit-for-tat type thing going on with it. And the, and with, being a W-2 employee, are we planning on paying them like monthly or whenever they have a meeting or quarterly? What's, what's the thought?
The thought is we would pay them monthly in accordance with the form that we received back, verified by Nick. And we'd pay them on a monthly basis and then do the true-up, take out the taxes and whatnot.
They wouldn't be at 1099?
No, they would be at W-2.
Oh.
Mr. Nutter, to your concern about kind of the conflict of interest that you were raising, I mean, I don't think it would be any different from the city council voting on items. They would certainly want to abstain, just like they would now if they had a conflict of interest with a vote. And, you know, certainly if, if there was some, something nefarious going on, there could be ethics issues or, or charges against them. But I don't think we expect anything like that, of course, and it wouldn't, I don't think it would, I don't think paying them would add any additional level of conflict of interest than what currently would exist.
I would hope not, but, you know. The other thing, do they have an option to opt out? What if I don't want to be paid? So there's the option that you could opt, that member could opt out of the payment?
Yes. That would be certainly fine.
Okay. Bob, we didn't recognize you to speak, but thank you for the comment. Yeah.
Any other counsel?
I'll make a couple of comments, because I'm going to take the complete opposite stance on this. I'm not going to support it, and it's nothing personal against anybody that sits on the zoning board or any other advisory committees that we have. But I, I just think it sends the wrong message, in my opinion, that if you're, you're sitting up there for the wrong reason, if you want to sit up there because you're getting paid or not getting paid. And I understand the comment that was just made, the zoning board members, it didn't matter to them, to them one way or another. So if they don't have a stink with it, I'm not sure why we would create another expense in our budget when we're trying to cut expense in our budget. And even though that comment was made, that that's a bit different of a committee than some of our other advisory committees, you're going to open the door. And, and I'm just telling you, you, you pay this committee, you're going to be paying them all sometime down the road because they're all going to want paid. So I'm not going to support it.
Anyone else from counsel? Mr. Orick, are you okay? Counsel, take your vote, please. Motion passes four-two. Chair would now entertain a motion for eight point two, please.
Madam Mayor, I move ordinance number forty-two seventy-four dash twenty-four slash twenty-five, approving a Pekin Court Street tax increment financing district redevelopment agreement with Kelly Madden for improvements to the property at 901 Derby Street, be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Nutter and second by Mr. Orick. Mr. Dossie, would you like to fill us in on 901 Derby?
Thank you, Mayor. Kelly Madden, the owner of 901 Derby Street, has a prospective new business ready to sign a lease agreement to open at this location. Mr. Madden has requested TIF assistance to help prove, improve the building, and the attached agreement provides for a five-year forgivable loan that pays 50% of eligible expenses, up to $50,000, with the condition that he must have a tenant that generates at least $5,000 of sales tax to the city annually. The prospective tenant projects they will do $250,000 in sales in the first year, which would yield approximately $9,375 of sales tax revenue to the city. City staff will check sales tax receipts before booking loan forgiveness each year. Staff is recommending approval of this ordinance, and Mr. Ray is available for any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Ray, would you like to say anything before it comes to counsel?
I, I just want to note, this, this money is available in the current budget. It would probably potentially have to be rolled over into the next budget, but this is that set of money several months ago that I, I let the council know that there would probably be funding left because a lot of projects or several projects were delayed or pushed into future years. And at that time, y'all had said, you know, don't, don't put out a whole nother round of applications, you know, we're not going to do a lot, but if you have a potential new business looking to come to town, go ahead and bring it before you. So that's what we're doing here. Mr. Madden is, is trying to do a lot of good work on Derby Street, trying to make investment to that area of the community, which, which I think at least seals consideration or warrants consideration of his request. So happy to answer any other questions. Mr. Madden is also here with his prospective tenants, if you'd like to hear anything from him.
Welcome, Mr. Madden. He has been a good business partner for the city. Anyone from counsel?
I do, I do have a question and absolutely support what Mr. Madden's been doing on Derby Street. Thank you. You've pushed in the envelope and trying to make things happen there. So I've got two questions and you'll probably have to come up and answer. Are you at liberty to express what business is potentially going in there? So if you could explain that, that may help a little bit. And when you're done with that, then I got another comment that involves the agreement.
Make sure the mic is still on.
I believe it is.
There we go. Welcome.
What is the business? The business is After Hours Auto, and they're finishing up the process of their LLC. We've talked about the TIF with Mr. Ray, and they're, they're planning on going there. I'll let them speak a bit more on it with their expertise. But the big thing that I worked with Mr. Ray, I was bringing new business in. So it, it took me a while to find something, but I worked hard at it. So we found something and we're going to try and improve that area a little bit more. I'll let these guys speak a bit.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Ben Pope. I was born and raised in Pekin. Met with Kelly about the building and we're excited to move in, start business. We feel within the first three years, the city will get their money back in tax dollars for the funding that we are asking for. It'll greatly help improve our business, making Derby Street just look that much better. We're excited to be a part of it. That area, Derby, you guys have done a lot already.
We have, right.
Yeah, and it's, it's exciting times. We just, we want to be a part of our community.
Thank you.
And bring jobs in and tax revenue. And, you know, I remember as a kid going down Derby, the South Side Business Administration, you know, all the stuff that they used to do. That's something that would be great to bring back. The car show at the Pekin Miracle Festival, things of that nature. Just improving the community and bringing in tax dollars and creating jobs, that's, that's the ultimate goal.
Love hearing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So what does the business, what is the business?
Um, it's, we're automotive restyling, bodywork, things of that nature. We want to get into advertising for other businesses as far as vinyl prints on the sides of work vehicles, semi-trailers, anything and everything. No job too big, no job too small. Is there any other questions?
Oh, yeah.
Estimated number of employees?
Uh, first year would be three.
Okay.
And we're planning on by the end of the third year, hopefully six. Those would be W-2 employees as well.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
This goes to Josh. If I read this right, then I'm going to, five thousand, let's say we don't meet the tax side of it. What's the penalty? Because I don't, I can't, don't read anything in that agreement that there's any kind of penalty. Let's say we build it, we give the money, three years down the road, he doesn't meet that agreement. What's, what's the penalty?
So on an annual basis, they essentially have a loan payment that's due to the city unless they meet the conditions of the agreement, and then it's forgiven. So if third year in, they don't meet that tax or sales tax generation requirement, then they would owe the payment that year. Now, of course, you know, if there's one-off circumstance, whatever, we could bring something back to council for you all to consider. That would not be staff, that would be council, that might do something. But just on a standard basis, each of those five years, they owe a payment until they meet all the conditions, including the sales tax generation.
So this goes on Mr. Madden?
Correct.
Because he's the developer, the property owner, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, it wouldn't necessarily have to, but he is the one, you know, in their situation, he's the one that's requested it for his property.
Right. He's applied for the TIF money, so.
Correct.
Okay.
And frankly, I always prefer to do things with property owners when possible because if a tenant goes away, it's harder to deal with that.
Yes. It's basically the last three letters, LLC. So, thank you.
Mr. Orick?
I have a question on your sales tax. Was it 9,000 and some dollars? Are you, you're in business now? Is that correct?
As of Monday, we will be in business legally. Our LLC will be done, insurance, everything.
Wait, in this auto repair, I, I've never, I've had my car repaired a few times, but it's, how much sales tax is on a car repair?
I believe the state sales tax rate is what, 10 and a quarter percent?
So they have to pay, if it's a $3,000 car, they pay the whole, on $3,000, they pay sales tax?
I do believe so, yes.
I'll, I'll interject here a little bit. So unlike their, their labor of working on a vehicle, that would not be sales tax, sales tax would not be applied to that. It's the, the printing, the parts, oil, whatever, you know, that they're selling to somebody. But, you know, primarily the, the printing that you're wanting to do for the businesses where it's got the advertising, I mean, that, they'd be selling those.
So then to follow up with Mr. Nutter, it's, what is it, it's three-year forgivable on the 50,000, five-year, 10,000 a year, is that correct?
Yeah.
So if he doesn't meet this goal, then none of the 10,000's forgiven the first year?
So in the, yeah, in the first year, if they don't reach that goal, they would owe the $10,000 payment plus interest.
And then the next year, say they make 5,000, they didn't meet the goal, so they owe 10,000 again?
No, no, so the agreement only requires that they do 5,000 a year in sales tax. It's the projection that they're going to do nine plus, but the agreement only says five, in case, you know, it's not, doesn't take off quite as fast as they like.
But if they don't reach that, then the whole amount of the loan is due for that year.
For that, for that year, the payment, yeah.
Okay. And in this case, Kelly Madden would be personally responsible for that loan payment?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Nutter, again.
Nick, is this, is it zoned properly? Does he have an occupancy permit yet?
No.
Is the building under construction?
No, just a, just a signed lease-in place.
Just what?
Just a lease-in place? So I haven't worked on the occupancy. Part of that was going to be figuring out where, where this went.
Okay.
Any other counsel? Seeing none, counsel, take your vote, please. Motion passes five-one. Chair would now entertain a motion for eight point three, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that resolution number two-two-eight dash twenty-four slash twenty-five, approving amendment five to project service agreement with Farnsworth Group for combined sewer overflow, CSO, long-term control plan, LTCP, phase three and phase four improvement construction engineering, be approved.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hoheimer and second by Mr. Abel. Mr. Dossi, I'm going to turn this over to you once again.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is to approve an amendment to the agreement with Farnsworth Group for construction engineering and loan administration services for the CSO phase three B and three C project. The city does not have sufficient staff to cover administration and observation of this project. Farnsworth Group will provide an engineer onsite full-time for the duration of the project, as well as providing shop drawing reviews and loan administration. Farnsworth Group is the designer of this project and has been working on the project since the original agreement was signed in 2012 and staff is recommending approval. Ms. Esker is available for any questions.
I also have Mike Lutz with Farnsworth Group available for questions.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Esker or Mike?
I have.
So how about?
Go ahead, Rick.
I've got one. So, under the financial impact, it says that the requested amount was accounted for previously in a separate ordinance. And then in parentheses, it states it'll be rolled over into the loan for the CSO project. So how was it accounted for previously?
So we spoke about the loan authorizing ordinance previously and I just wanted to note that this was not an additional expense. This is going to be put into that loan and we'll be paying on it over the next twenty years rather than as a, like a lump sum or even as just the invoices come in.
So, when that says accounted for previously in a separate ordinance, am I to understand that that dollar amount has already been approved? And now we're just approving to move that and roll it over into the project? I don't understand what I'm reading here.
So you're approving the engineering agreement? The financing portion of it will be approved with a loan ordinance? And we already, go ahead, Mike.
Loan ordinance was approved in November. The funding for the loan, so this money is in that amount, in that tabulation.
So why is it being brought in front of us again then?
We have to have the agreement to get the loan from EPA.
This is engineering.
Right. They had to have an updated agreement so that it can be, it can be refunded back, it can be paid for by the loan.
Okay. Thank you. So along with that, that previous agreement, are we rolling in this other loan? This number six down there, SRF loan? That's rolled into this twenty-six million?
It was figured in. It's already, you're already paying on that loan, but it's figured into the original loan ordinance and we had to do an amendment onto it. So that was in the original, that was paid for in the original loan ordinance. We had to include that because of the amendment that we did.
Whoa. Timeout here. That sounds to me like we're paying on this loan twice. Have we paid off this loan that you know of, Bob or Eric? This number six on there, SRF loan number L seventeen thirty-eighty-two?
My understanding is that it's currently being paid, so, Mike, if you care to elaborate. So basically, within this loan, there's capacity within it with the existing loans and we're just adding to the overall loans that we can capture. I mean, was that safe to say or?
It's, give me a shot here, guys. So think of the twenty-six million as like a debt ceiling. So you approved the city to have an IP, like combined IPA debt up to twenty-six million dollars. So that has to include everything we've already got on file with them, plus the project that we're doing for CSO. So that's why it's twenty-six million, even though the CSO project is only going to be, you know, twenty or so. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Like a refinance.
You're not refinancing, you're just, you just increased the debt ceiling so that you could take on more IPA debt. That's what the previous ordinance did.
And we approved that, absolutely, but we have never signed any kind of an agreement on any loan because it's never been brought back for a loan agreement assessment or whatever.
Agreed. You need to pass the engineering agreement. We'll go actually get the loan terms for the new loan and then council will have to approve that as well.
Okay.
Assuming you want the project to go forward.
Right.
Once we have the engineering contract.
So there, in February, there is a public hearing scheduled. So along with that public hearing, are we putting the cart before the horse with this agreement here? Because what if the public hearing comes up and there's something really crazy in it? I doubt, I doubt it, but just need to clarify it because it's been asked.
Well, it'll delay things if there's anything that comes up in the public hearing.
Well, we've already been delayed, so I'm not worried about that.
So, we've never really had many issues with public hearings, especially on things that are required projects to meet, you know, Water Pollution Control Board orders and stuff like that. So it's part of your long-term control plan that was originally submitted.
I know.
Back in twenty twelve. Twelve, yes.
Yeah, ten or twelve, exactly.
Dave, we're having that public meeting as soon as the IPA said that we should and that it could help us speed up the process. So that's why we're having it on the date, on February third.
Well, that's some good information. Good.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other council? Motion passes six-zero. We have now come down to item eight point four. Chair would entertain a motion for eight point four, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that resolution number two-two-nine dash twenty-four slash twenty-five approving amendment number one to master services agreement for professional engineering and service, engineering services on construction projects, projects agreement and task order with Maurer Stutz, Inc. for Court Street Construction Engineering be approved.
Motion made by Ms. Hoheimer and second by Mr. Abel. Mr. Dossi, once again, I will call on you.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is to approve the Maurer Stutz, approve Maurer Stutz to perform construction engineering and oversight on the Court Street rehabilitation project from eighth to tenth street. They will also provide some help to the city for the project from tenth to stadium. The city does not currently have sufficient staffing levels to manage these projects without assistance from an outside engineering firm. The city engineer will still oversee the project and the consultant engineer will be, will not be out on the site at all times. Staff is recommending approval. And Ms. Esker is available for any questions?
I would just like to know a couple of things. First, I've got Curtis Lynn with Maurer Stutz available for questions for them. But also with staffing levels being what they are in the engineering department, we may need to rely on Maurer Stutz even more. They would have to, if they need additional fee in this agreement, they would have to bring that back before council. It's hard to know exactly what fee to put on here when you don't know what the staffing levels are going to do if the city's able to hire, you know, and fill the vacancies in the department quickly, then this probably is pretty accurate. If the vacancies persist for a long period of time, this probably will increase. Just wanted to put that forward and make sure everybody's on the same page.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions?
Yeah.
I do.
So it's showing two-seven-seven line item in here, so is that what the city's projecting that we're going to have to budget this out of in next year's budget?
We have money budgeted in that line item for this fiscal year, but we also will need to budget for next fiscal year. I think that is a reasonable line item for, to be used for this, but it may change pending budget, obviously.
So, looking at that five hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred dollar number, how much does that put this project cost above what the estimated cost of the project is?
It was always anticipated that the city would need outside engineering help on at least one of the two remaining Court Street projects from either eighth to tenth or from tenth to stadium. With those projects not both probably going at the same time because of delays with land acquisition, prop, land acquisition on eighth to tenth, right now, we just need to staff tenth to stadium, which is still hopefully going forward in the spring. With only one engineering technician in the department remaining, we really, the city can't provide the staff to watch that project and do what's needed. So, so we need the outside help.
Okay. Are you finished?
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Orik. Do you have questions for him? Do you want him to come to the podium?
Well, I don't know, either him or Josie. I have a couple of questions. Number one, when I looked at this agenda earlier, I saw in there that this agreement was for two people, two thousand hours to come do their work in this, this engineering oversight, which I found, that's more than a year's time of work. And that alone was like two hundred thousand each for those two workers, but I don't see it here, other than the final cost you've got there, like five hundred and seventy thousand. Didn't Maurer Stutz do the construction oversight of the first oversight of Court Street?
Millenia is actually out doing the first section of Court Street. Maurer Stutz was on Derby Street from eighth to fourteenth.
No, no. What we did from, where was it? Hilltop out to Veterans?
It was Millenia.
Millenia did that? Okay. And did we get any other RFPs for this? Because I find this is atrocious for a two-block, that they're going to spend four thousand, two guys, four thousand hours overseeing construction?
So they're going to also be helping from tenth to stadium, which is a lot longer section. And also-
Under this contract?
Both are included. And it's basically however many hours they spend. So they tried to put in as many as they thought were possible.
To accomplish both.
To accomplish, well, originally, the city was, since I've announced that I am leaving the city, things have changed slightly. It's hard to determine exactly how many hours will be needed, not knowing what the city's staffing levels will be. But I would state that on a contract that has like federal money, which the section from eighth to tenth does, it requires a lot of paperwork. Generally, you have a project that lasts the whole construction season, nine, ten months, and then you have somebody or two people in an office doing paperwork for the remainder of the year. So it is common to spend a whole year on construction projects and even after the project's done, for one or more people to be working for several months on paperwork.
So as these engineers go out and do their work, they're going to submit a pay voucher to the city?
They'd submit an invoice.
Huh?
They'd submit an invoice-
Yeah.
-for their hours, yes.
In this case, who would approve that voucher to verify that this is correct and we should pay it?
Generally, I would be doing that. I'm not sure who will be doing that for the city. That's something that's yet to be determined.
Okay. And how do we know that this is a good bid? That it isn't, we couldn't get with somebody else get a better bid?
So it's not really a bid process with engineering services. We go through an RFQ process or we request qualifications. We had two companies that we selected, Millenia and Maurer Stutz, whenever we did our last The problem with submitting for engineering services based on a cost is, I mean, you can send somebody out there that has no experience and they will be cheaper, for sure, but you don't want that person to be managing your project. You want somebody who has a reasonable amount of experience and that hourly rate is dependent on experience. So I think it's justified.
RFQ put in a, the amount of experience needed for a person to go inspect this?
So when they submit their qualifications, they submit resumes for all of their employees, which would-
And then we go through those?
-see the experience and what types of projects everybody has. Yes, correct.
Okay. All right. So you believe this is a good, fair bid for our residents?
It's not a bid, it's an hourly rate contract.
Price, I would say.
So, yeah, it's not, it's not necessarily the price. That's what I'm trying to get at. It's an hourly rate contract, so they will only bill for the hours that they're out there. And I do believe that the staff that they are providing is qualified and, you know, did, it's, John Cook is going to be the RE on that project. He's the one who was the RE on Derby Street. I think he did a great job. If you talk to the business owners down there, I think they would agree with that statement. And, you know, he'll only charge for the hours that he needs to work, so.
We still have some things to be done before we can even bid the project. Do you perceive we're going to do that project this year or?
I still believe that tenth to stadium will be done this year. Plans are almost ready. You know, we've got a couple of land acquisition items that we need to work out. But, yeah, I believe that will, will stay as long as, you know, everything-
Okay.
-after I'm finished, continues to get done, it should go this spring.
I'm going to miss you.
Same.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah. I've got to go back here and find this. So, from what I'm hearing, you really aren't anticipating eighth to tenth street possibly starting this year? And if it is, it's going to be late because of all the stuff that we still got to go through, property acquisition, demo, go ahead.
So whenever we had the special meeting where we talked about land acquisition with CVS, I told you that if you, if we did not approve that item, it would likely be delayed.
Yep.
That is still true. As long as we don't have the land acquisition done with CVS, that project cannot move forward. We've got a pretty tight deadline to be able to make the next letting. I don't believe we'll make the March letting.
I don't either.
If we made the April letting, it's late April. I dot generally takes a month and a half to get contracts signed, so then we're starting in June, July. I don't know that that would be the best time of year to start this project as it's a full replacement and we won't get it done before winter. So it would likely get pushed back into fall-
Till the following year.
-fall or winter start for water main replacement and then start in the spring. Yeah.
So if that happens, this contract, the way you're stating it, says they will help from tenth to stadium. Is that correct? And the same dollar amount, basically?
No. The contract is an hourly rate contract. They will work however many hours they're, they are asked to work by the city at that hourly rate. This is a rough estimate for basically if they're working a whole year.
It's a rough estimate, but we're going to be held to the dollar amount that's on there per hour.
And I, and I'm telling you, I can't tell you how much they're going to need to work because I don't know how much staff the city is going to have. So if the city has more staff, we get to use consultants less. It is much more cost-effective for the city to have staff and use their own staff, but that would require us being able to find qualified staff to hire.
I realize that. So why wasn't, was Millenia in the running for this project?
Yes, I originally planned on using Millenia and they told me that they no longer had enough engineers to staff the job.
Well, isn't that nice?
It's hard, it is hard to find good construction engineers.
That's all I got.
So we, you understand that if they work five hours, they get paid for five hours. If you work twenty, you get paid for twenty. I wasn't sure if Mr. Nutter was following all that.
It's just that we got to make sure, and you explained why Millenia didn't do it. Okay, that's pretty legitimate. We've had the same thing with previous auditors and everything else too, so default to who's left, kind of.
I really should give a shout-out to Kurt over there because I called him last minute. Like I'd been planning on using Millenia for this job for about a year. Talked to Millenia, tried to, and they had people retire on them. They called and said, we can't do it, we don't have the people. And I last minute called Kurt and he stepped up and was able to provide engineers. So not only, did we try something else? I just want to note that appreciation.
So we're kind of down to one firm, sounds like, for any road construction project, unless somebody else pops up out of the-
I mean, we can always do another RFQ.
RFQ.
I believe that, you know, we need to whenever we go out for additional projects. It's time.
Yeah, I agree.
But for this particular- But for this particular project, I, I think this is the best path forward.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Council, take your vote, please. Motion passes six zero. Chair would now entertain a motion for eight point five, please.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that Resolution number 230 dash 24 slash 25 approving new vehicle purchase order with Truck Centers Incorporated for 2025 Western Star 47X tandem dump truck be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hilsen, second by Mr. Nutter. Mr. Dossi.
Thank you, Mayor. Before councils and ordinance to purchase a new 2025 47X Western Star tandem dump truck slash snowplow, the city council previously discussed this purchase during budget deliberations. Originally, there were two trucks in the budget, however, it was cut to one truck for the final budget presentation that was approved. During these discussions, the council was informed that the Truck Centers is a cooperative purchasing agent through Sourcewell, eliminating the need for an RFP. Further, it was also noted that the truck needed to be ordered in advance to ensure delivery several months later. The truck became available on, uh, January 3rd of 2025, and the total cost of the truck completely outfitted was 271,578 dollars. Staff is recommending approval of this purchase.
Any discussion?
I think after looking at some of those trucks Saturday, uh, it's kind of a no brainer. We have a truck with a slice right down the side of it that salts the streets from the left.
I, I think that's what Mr. Nutter said.
So, do we already have, has this truck already been delivered then?
That's correct, it has been delivered.
But it hasn't been paid for?
Correct.
So, how's that possible?
So, the best I, so I had reached out to council members on this. I don't, I don't think you, you and I had talked on this yet. Uh, back in October, uh, the Public Works Director was made, uh, aware that the vehicle was gonna be available, and, uh, if you recall during the conversations during budget time, they would make a determination whether or not they were gonna move forward with the truck. They had a couple trucks down there, one where the cab of the truck, uh, can't be welded on, or it, it's, it's in a, it's in poor condition, and, and we're gonna get rid of it. They were given the go-ahead through discussions to, uh, deliver that truck, uh, once it was in and, and outfitted. Shortly after that time, or that discussion that took place, uh, between the Public Works Director and, uh, Truck Centers, um, the Public Works Director, uh, was no longer here. Um, the truck showed up, and I had to backtrack to figure out what, where we were at in the whole process and of everything. So, uh, we do have the truck, um, and, you know, this is just a formality to go back and, uh, bring it before council for the final approval.
I do recall him talking at a meeting about that, that it had become available.
So, we're gonna put something in place, I hope, to try to prevent this from occurring again.
Correct.
Okay.
But this is for the street department, correct? With the snowplow?
Correct.
Why are we paying for part of this out of the sewer fund?
Correct, and I will let Eric and Bob, if they wanna, we, we discussed this, and we also talked with Brian as far as some of the uses on that, so, uh, th- that's why part of it is coming out of sewer fund.
Before they start discussion, I do wanna say, um, Mr. Nutter, that, um, John and I have discussed that there are many, um, policies and procedures that need to be put in place that have been, um, either need updated, neglected, not done, but need to be finished, so he is working diligently on that. Eric?
So, within this, um, the purchase of the truck, um, is taking all of the general fund line item, um, associated with this. The rest is coming out of the sewer fund. The thought was that some of the use of the, the truck, and then some of the shifted use with other tandems might be applicable to sewers as they use the tandems for other purposes and whatnot, there might see, be some benefit on that end. Probably not the most ideal of situations, but again, this whole situation is not the most ideal to begin with.
I believe it was sludge for remu-
That, that was the intent, not necessarily for this specific truck, but-
Brian mentioned that Saturday in his presentation, it was gonna be co-used by both departments.
Correct.
The, the other thing is, so, we, we call them the street department-
Yeah.
But the street department works on our sewers all the time.
Yeah.
So, not just at the treatment plant sewers, but like our actual sewers in the street. If they're going to go dig up a sewer, they need to put that dirt somewhere. It goes in a tandem.
Right.
So, we use, we use the tandems for both, I guess, is the simplest answer.
Absolutely, and like I said, that was brought up and discussed on Saturday.
Right, but I don't think we use all of them for both. I mean, we've even purchased trucks specifically for the wastewater treatment plant for sludge removal, and skid steers and other equipment down there.
We put, uh-
So, if we're short on money to purchase this truck, why wouldn't we just pull that out of the general fund reserves? Why are we just gonna try to justify that, oh, well, we might use it for a little of the wastewater too, so we'll just charge it to sewer?
So, because it's not a might, it is going to be-
They said they use it in the wastewater, Brian had that in his presentation Saturday.
Well, typically, when we buy new trucks, it's the older trucks that we use down there at the sewer plant.
Yeah, we're, we're going to, so we, we put older-
You could justify that with every single truck you buy at the street department, but we're not taking every single truck at the street department and utilizing it down at the sewer fund.
So, Mr. Hils, um, there was picture showed to us Saturday, um, it'll be in your packet.
That's fine.
Um, and, and there's literally holes on the side. We don't wanna put sludge in that and let it go down the street that it's being hauled out to, um, Indy and Creek or wherever it goes.
So, y- you are correct, Mr. Hils. We did put an older model from the street department fleet at the wastewater treatment plant. It's no longer functioning, you know, our, we put the oldest model there, it's not working for them anymore, so the street department is going to be helping haul sludge, um, with some of the other tandems. I don't know which tandem is gonna be used, that's why only a portion of it is, is being charged to sewer. We're not saying, oh, the whole thing is gonna be charged to sewer. I would anticipate that we will probably charge some tandem portion of every tandem going forward to sewer because, you know, eventually, they all get used because the street department, like I said, also is the sewer department, even we, if we don't call them that, and they use it even if they're not at the treatment plant. They're using it on our sewer repairs.
And I get the whole argument, trust me, I get it. I get the whole argument about how you can justify that some of these trucks at the street department could be financed through the sewer fund because, well, you use it for this, or you use it for that. We've been doing this for years. We've even been doing that with staff salaries for years, and allocating them to different departments because, oh, well, they do a certain amount of work here and there. But what I find interesting is it's getting to be more prominent with the street department after we were presented with a majority of the council to approve a 40% raise this past year on our wastewater rates, and a 5% increase on those annually moving forward. Now, we've got all this extra money coming in, in the wastewater fund, and we don't have that in the general fund with the street department, so we're, appears to me, moving excess expense over into the sewer fund anytime we can try to justify that because we got a fee being paid over in that fund, which is increasing every year. That's kinda the way I look at it, but I'm not doubting one bit that that truck may not be needed, but I just get a little suspect at times on the way some of these are funded, and what departments and line items they're funded through. And I'll just leave my comments at that, thank you.
Mr. Dossi or Eric, um, I don't wanna butcher your last name because I've tried saying it a couple of times. Um, Mr. Eric, um, would you like to, uh, embellish a little bit about, uh, proper accounting and why we do this, and, um, it's best practice, and it would, this was all discussed Saturday along with, um, I'm pretty sure, um, they said like 50,000 would be saved, um, with us removing the sludge and, and hauling it away, was that not around 50,000?
Annually.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah.
So, we still see account payable reports with the expenses in there from somebody else doing it. So, I don't think we're generating that entire savings that sometimes we're being told. I think you need to look at the payments that are being made down there, and who exactly is removing that sludge down there? Not that we're not helping, but there are other contractors that are also getting paid to do that, which what the intent was, when we were getting these trucks back when we started this, we were told that wasn't gonna happen anymore, that we would solely be doing that as the city, and that's where all the savings was gonna come from.
So, so I don't know, I, I guess I'm confused because you're saying other people are hauling the sludge out. There's a landfill where we dump at the landfill. We're not paying X Waste or anybody else to do the hauling for us. The city of Pekin is doing the hauling, and that's where the cost savings is coming in to effect for the city. That was discussed as well, uh, this past weekend. Um, you know, that truck is, is end of life, uh, so to speak, and I think what we've had discussions with as we're building out this new budget, and was discussed over this past weekend, is that we're trying to look at doing things a little bit different in the street department. I understand we're fixating on how the accounting goes, I'll leave that up to the accounting gurus as far as the line items and how that works within the budget, but I think what we need to understand are, what we're trying to do is be more efficient, and these trucks are being utilized. We're focusing on one thing, the sludge and the hauling of that sludge. We also dig up the streets, or we dig up where the sewers are, and we replace sewer lines, or we do that. Those trucks are also being utilized for that. That's what we're trying to say, and, and that's where that, that came from, trying to be responsible to the general fund as well. And that's, that's what these, these, the sewer fund is supposed to do, is supposed to pay back into that, and I believe that's what that's doing. So, I, I, as far as other companies that are, that are having other costs in there as far as hauling sludge, the only cost for hauling sludge is us taking it to the dump, and you probably have that tipping fee that we are paying to dump there.
I know where, I know where Rick's coming from because I've looked at the same thing, and it's called GFL sludge hauling, and the accounts payable, so we need to take a look at that, 'cause I don't understand how it can be. I understand the sludge going to the landfill and we pay per ton, but when we got it set up, this, GFL's hauling it, either we're misrepresenting it, we need to look into it, and I s- little bit challenged whether we're saving money by doing it ourselves, so.
So, Mr. Nutter, it's in the sludge removal line item, for sure. Um, on the AP list, it's called sludge disposal, and GFL is the tipping fee contract for that. Previously, Waste Management is who we had contracted to haul it. So, you're right, it's in the hauling line item, or sludge removal line item, but it's, it's sludge disposable in the AP list.
So, the GFL sludge removal is the landfill charge?
Right.
Yeah, and it's, it's called sludge disposal, not, not hauling or anything like that.
We have a tipping fee that we have.
Oh, I know we got a tipping fee, I'm just, Rick, am I correct? That's where you see it? Same thing? And I know it's off subject with the truck-
Well, lesson of what's being said tonight, I mean, it, it's, it's a little bit, that, that's not the way you would understand it when you read through the account payable report. I'll just put it that way.
Okay, I had, I had asked a question of-
The way the language is written.
I had asked a question of, um, Eric, would you like to, is everything good, or would you like to, uh, embellish?
Well, um, with pieces of equipment, I mean, if there's a, uh, applic- uh, applicable piece of overhead, so if there is a percentage use in a different fund, for example, if there, it's sewer, solid waste, or enterprise funds, typically, you know, you would, you can often see a portion of that expense going to that fund. Um, you know, in this case, um, you know, if, if this piece of equipment, there's some utilization in another fund, then it can be, you know, booked to that, uh, that different-
And that's proper accounting.
Well, there's that, and, um, you know, and part of this too, if, if there's heartburn with this and what have you, and if we do consider, you know, wanna stick everything in, in the general fund, then we'll, could come, uh, back with a budget amendment and do what have you, and so you have some different options at your disposal, but again, with this, if you have a piece of equipment and a portion of that is gonna be utilized in a different fund, then that is definitely, um, you know, a, a path that's recommended here.
Yes. Mr. Orik.
The number of trucks now that are snow removal trucks at the street department, what's the number of them now?
I did not bring that with me. I should've anticipated you asking me that question because I, I think I get it from you about every year.
Wait, let me just voice my concern, and you can get back later with an answer. We used to have 10 employees, we had 10 trucks, 10 snow routes. We have more than 10 employees, do we have more than 10 trucks? And if we added snow routes, if so, why?
There, there are extra t- trucks in case one breaks down, they, they have some-
So, we still just have 10?
No, uh, there's more than 10 trucks. I-
No, no, I mean 10 snow routes.
Do you?
So, yeah, so this, this year, the streets department added two new employees, something that we, yeah, hit on Saturday, and they did adjust the snow routes accordingly so that the snow routes would be done quicker.
So, they all work day shift?
So that they would, the snow routes would be done quicker. What's your question about day shift?
All the trucks are out at the same time, they're all working day shift, as we would call it.
There are a couple of reserves that don't necessarily get used unless a truck is broken down.
You're talking about people or trucks?
Trucks.
So, all the employees are employed day shift to go out?
I mean, they, they go out whenever we ask them to go out to plus nine.
I mean, it, 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 look, we're, we're-
Well, here's the, here's the point I'm trying to make. Where I worked in an industry, our company had to buy a half a million dollar machine. They rented all three shifts. They didn't make a machine for every, so everybody worked day shift, and I don't think we should be doing that when we add employees, that we should generate a second shift in the wintertime so that they could go out and cover the routes in the evening and afternoon when the day shift gets done, instead of buying a, what was the price of the truck? 270, so they could all work, they could all work day shift? That, that's-
Well, I, I mean, I think-
That's not cost effective for our residents.
We're focusing on day shift, but that's not necessarily the truth. If the sewer goes out in the middle of the night, they're coming out in the middle of the night to work on it.
I'm talking about when the regway's scheduled, when it snow's coming and it's regway scheduled.
Sometimes you have to wait, wait until the snow stops.
I realize that, but do, do they put-
It depends on the event too. I mean, you have a blizzard that goes on for hours and hours, you know, they are splitting them up and working them in different shifts so that they can be out, be out on the strip. They, they are doing that.
That is, we add employees, we're not buying another truck so they get to work-
Right, and, and that's not the case. You, it, you, if you see the condition of some of these trucks-
Oh, I know, I've seen it.
I mean, I, I've said it before, you could put antique vehicle license on some of these, they're well over 20 years old.
That's true.
And, you know, we're, what we're trying to do is we're trying to get safe vehicles for our workers back out on the street, and as we get those in, we are in the process of getting rid of the ones that are there not gonna work, and, and we're trying to figure out what's the best way to go do that and still do some stuff, because we, we haul the sludge, to, to Councilman Hill's point, we do try to use that-
Right.
Older truck because-
Yeah.
You know, who wants to drive around in that all day?
I'm just concerned about the snow removal.
Right, but when you're using the snow removal, we're trying to put the better vehicles out there on the street. They're more fuel efficient, they're more cost effective in many ways, uh, mechanically and stuff, but they also break, the older ones in particular, they break down quite often.
I'm not discounting that, I agree.
Yeah, and I, and I'm just saying, that's why you have a couple extras in the, in the, as a backup, if, if this one breakdowns, we could continue operation.
That's a good way to do it. I'm just concerned that we're not having a truck for every employee so they can all go out at once.
Yeah, no, there's-
Because that's two or three trucks that we didn't have because we got extra points, buy them a truck. That's my main, main point I'm trying to make. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Council, take your vote, please. Motion passes five. Well, but five and one abstain. Chair would now entertain a motion for eight point six, please. Chair would now entertain a motion for eight point six, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance number four two seven five dash twenty four slash twenty five, amending chapter five, article four of the Pekin City Code regarding streets, sidewalks, other public property to prohibit storage of personal property and unauthorized camping and/or sleeping on property owned by the city of Pekin or any other unit of government or government agency within the city of Pekin be approved.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Abel and seconded by Ms. Hoheimer. Mr. Dossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm going to pass this off to Chief Rainey, but I do want to just kind of address a couple of comments that were made at public input. One is the burden on the police department. I think the police department has been working on this for a long time, uh, coming up with a plan and putting things in place. And the other portion of it is we talk about the fines and the jailable, jailing and everything. That is something that was discussed before this initial ordinance was brought before council some time ago. And that has never been the goal or the intention of, uh, the police department. In fact, our ordinance, while it might have some things that, in it that the IML had recommended, there are many things that, that it does not. And, uh, I don't think jail is one of the, uh, options that we sought after. In fact, we've been enforcing this for this entire past summer and there's yet to be a ticket issued. I think it's very important to understand our priority are that we put resources and we have partnered with agencies to provide resources for those in need. And that has been the goal and we've had a lot of successes with that so far. Unlike some of the other, uh, communities who are still struggling to try to figure out what's the right way to, to go about handling this. You know, we're trying to find that balancing act between what the community's asking for and protecting constitutional rights and, and all those things in between. And I think we're getting there and I think we're finding some things. We're trying to tweak things a little bit as we go to address some of the issues. But I'm going to turn it over to Chief Rainey to, uh, speak about this a little bit more and, uh, offer a little bit more information.
Thank you, Mr. Dossi and Chief Rainey.
Yes, thank you. So last summer in July, this council passed, uh, the original ordinance, which the proposed ordinance changes tonight. Ninety-nine percent of what's in there was already passed. Uh, we made very few changes. As I've spoke to several of you about, uh, this ordinance amongst all the ordinances that the police department passes, is one that is going to continue to be brought forward as we come across new challenges. And we just try to adapt to the changes as they come about. And so that's what this is being brought forward for. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear that this isn't a new ordinance. The fines that are in this are the fines that have been in place since day one. Uh, as Manager Dossi, excuse me, stated, uh, we have not issued, uh, um, a citation or a fine. Our ordinance does not, um, have a jailable offense as part of it. And that, our whole goal is here is to continue to work with our unhoused individuals to get them housed. And so the changes that you see in this ordinance today is just adding a component of better understanding of what the definition of sleeping is. And so if you'll see, I left everything in red that were changes in this ordinance. And, um, I worked quite a long time with the city attorney to come up with, uh, one definition of sleeping. And so, uh, what you see it presented today is what we feel is, is a good definition that is legally defendable, but also gives our officers the opportunity to go up and make contact with individuals that are sleeping on public property. And so the way it was originally authored, it didn't really have a component. If someone just lays down, like say on a sidewalk, that's the common complaint that we get. And so I know a lot of the council members have received complaints and photos over the last six months of people doing that and those get forwarded to me. And so we're just trying to respond to like what Manager Dossi said. We're just trying to meet the needs of our citizens and also the needs of our unhoused. And so we're always trying to find that equilibrium where we're protecting constitutional rights of our, of our citizens and also of our unhoused. And so as it stands right now, if a subject is, citizen is just laying on, on the sidewalk per se, without any camping paraphernalia, uh, we don't even go up and make contact with them because we believe that the current ordinance does not allow for us to enforce that. And obviously if that is the case, then that will be an unconstitutional contact and we're never going to do that. So we're requesting that this change be made so our officers have legal authority to go up, make contact with ours. Most of the time it's unhoused individuals. It's not always, um, but we would have the authority to go up, make contact with them and move them along. The purpose of this ordinance and this change is never to be punitive and it's always to try to strike that medium between, uh, being able to travel freely on public property and, uh, you know, have our unhoused, uh, be safe. And so I, Manager Dossi addressed several of the things that I was going to cover, but I did want to, we had a concerned citizen that, you know, brought forth some things and it's things that I get, uh, spoken to about regularly. And so the one thing that I will say is it goes against what most people would believe, but, uh, the comment was made that there's not a single person that wants to be homeless. And I have found over the last seven months that that is actually contrary to what most people believe. There are, most of the people that are in an unhoused status in the city of Pekin right now is by choice. Either the police department or the social worker in our department has made contact with virtually every person that we know to be in an unhoused status and offered them housing and any type of assistance that we can come up with. And so, um, it took me by surprise also, I have to admit, that there were just people that just, no, I'm perfectly good, I don't need any help, I don't want any help, I don't want a house, I don't want to go anywhere. And so we continue to work with them and, and I gave a, a little presentation on, over the weekend to council. But what I have learned is that sometimes it takes a while to break through and, and build a relationship with the people that are in an unhoused status. And we continue to foster that through the police department, through the social work program. And we will continue to do that and that's our top priority. I just want to make sure that the citizens and the council knows that this change is, is not punitive. We're not looking to issue citations, we're just looking to be able to go up, make contact legally and get them in a better place than laying, uh, on the public property. So just wanted to address those few issues that were brought forth because I know those are concerns, uh, of many citizens. And we just try to make sure that they know that the police department is out here trying to place them, get them assistance and is not to in any way be punitive or cause them even more stress than they're already under.
Thank you so much, Chief Rainey. Any other discussion from the council? Seeing none, council, take your vote please. Motion passes six zero. Before we go on to eight point seven, I'm going to ask the city clerk and our legal counsel. Six point five was pulled and said to put at eight point eight. Shouldn't that be above the, the mayor's, uh, discussion?
Your prerogative.
I think probably it should be. But then what should it be, Nate, uh, is it six point six one or six point one? Eight point six point one or A or B?
I think it's eight, eight.
Eight point six B.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, Mayor, on consent agenda items that are pulled from the agenda, when they are moved to new business, they actually keep the same number.
Oh, okay.
So we can usually, you know, we can say it's the, we can, you know, discuss it at the end of new business or after eight point six, however, however you.
I would like to do it, um, now after eight point six. So, so it is going to be six point five that was pulled from the consent agenda. Okay. Mr. Hills, are you good with that? Since you pulled this, okay, so I'm going to turn this over to you since you pulled six point five from the consent agenda.
Do you want me to make a motion first?
Okay.
Mayor, I move, uh, ordinance number four two seven oh dash twenty four slash twenty five, approving site plan for Pekin Park District for the construction and operation of a ground mount solar array for the property near the intersection of Stadium Drive and North Parkway Drive be approved.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Oric and seconded by Ms. Hoheimer. Um, let me put it here. And this is on six point five, so missed, in the consent agenda. Mr. Dossi, would you like to, um, take and talk a little bit about this? Or do I turn it over to Mr. Hills since he pulled it?
No, I, I can explain a little bit. This is the, uh, request by the park district for their site plan to be approved, uh, for Clean Energy Design Group, uh, to install their solar array. I will pass it back to Nick McQuett to speak a little bit about this, but I will, I'll let you know that the ZBA did approve unanimously, uh, to bring this forward. And I'll, I'll let Nick talk to you a little bit more about the discussions in the, the ZBA and, and what this is all about.
Okay, um, Mr. McQuett.
So what is before you is approving the final site plan, uh, for the construction and operation of a ground mount solar array. The ZBA did look at this project and concluded that a special use was not required for this and determined it was just a permitted ground mount array. With that, approval could, could have been given just by my department, but I decided to refer to ZBA and ultimately city council for approval due to the size of the project.
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Hills first since you pulled it and then I'll let the rest of council speak.
Yes, thank you. So, um, I'll just start out with my first question. So it talks about that there'll, it, it talks about there is no upfront cost to this, to the district for this project. And then it talks about the estimated cost savings for the next fifteen years. What is, what is the cost is what I'd like to know because I couldn't find that anywhere in here. I don't know if you would allow Mr. Benton or anyone to get up that might be able to answer. I don't see a cost, construction cost on what it's going to cost to install these solar panels.
Sure, uh, I have Dan Griffin here with Clean Energy Design Group and he can talk about that.
Sure.
Hi.
Hi, thanks for having me.
You betcha.
So there is no cost to the park district whatsoever.
So then how does clean energy make money off of this?
We, um, uh, by owning the system, we get certain, uh, incentives federally and from the state. And that allows us to put a system in like this, no cost to, uh, the park district. We've done this in over sixty different school districts, uh, no cost to them. But the incentives are such that we can financially install it, make, uh, profit on the installation with no cost to the entity, which in, in this case is the park district. You know, the, uh, the, the big, big factor in Illinois currently is the, uh, what's called the renewable, uh, energy credits and, and the, and the recs. And because of that, we're able to put a system on the park district that they'll pay two and a half cents per kilowatt hour for the next twenty-five years. No matter how high the energy rate goes from Ameren, the park district will always pay two and a half cents. And not knowing what energy costs are going to do in the future, but ten years, I mean, I mean, it could almost double uh, what they'll currently be saving once the system goes into operation.
Okay, and then, once all those panels are decommissioned in, at the end of their lifespan, whether that be twenty or twenty-five years, whatever that may, who pays for the cost to tear all them back out and put everything back to the original, uh, way it was before?
Well, that'd be our responsibility, but those panels have a lifespan of, of over thirty-five years. They may only be producing.
That's detrimental and that's contradictory to what, what was told in our package. Our package says twenty-five years.
Well, that's how long the, uh, PPA agreements for purchase power agreement. That's how long the park district is signing up to receive that, that energy. With the ability to extend that, uh, PPA agreement for another five and then another five. So that system could operate, uh, way past thirty-five years and still be producing at least seventy percent of its power.
So do those solar panels that you're going to be installing, do they have a warranty on for thirty-five plus years?
Well, we'll own them, so that'll be our problem. If, if a solar panel, uh, goes bad, then we replace it. We're incentivized to keep the system at optimum production so that we can, um, receive an optimal, uh, purchase power agreement payment. But also that makes all of that available energy always available to the park district. So there's a double incentive on both sides to keep that system at optimal production. So if a panel goes bad, we'll replace it. If, if twenty panels go bad, we replace it. If they're under warranty, we'll get them replaced. If not, it's our responsibility to replace them.
Where are those manufactured at?
Yes.
Solar panels are a commodity. They're, they're manufactured literally entire, around the entire world.
Where are the ones that you're installing going to be manufactured?
Those will come from, um, more than likely Cambodia.
Okay.
And, and ju, and I appreciate the, the question. There's only, there's literally only one right now, there's only one American-made, all-American-made, uh, panel and it's a company called Longi, okay? And right now until more solar facilities start operation in the United States, that's the only choice that is had. If an American-made panel is utilized, you can, uh, add another ten percent to the tax credit. But the solar, the solar, the one sole solar panel in the United States is so expensive that it's cost prohibitive to try to use it. So it's just a real dilemma. I'd love to use an American-made panel. The companies that have the ingots and the ingots is what they slice the silicon off of to, to make the wafers and the panels, okay? To have an ingot manufacturing facility, it's, it's literally hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars, okay? But there's probably a hundred thousand manufacturers or assemblers of solar panels around the world. They buy the cells, they buy the frame, they buy the, the little tiny wires, the strings, the, uh, back cover and the coupler on the back, the PV conductors. And they're assembled and then they're put on the market. But the, the real, uh, thing you have to watch for is you want what's called a tier one solar panel. Those tier one panels are, are made by a manufacturer that has the ingot, that has all of the, uh, really wherewithal. So they're going to be in business for a very long time to honor that warranty. A lot of solar companies in six months, they're, they're not to be found. And then, uh, the warranty's out of, you, you have no warranty. So that's what you really have to be careful of. But yes, there, those would come from Cambodia.
Okay. I appreciate that information. I do have a couple more questions. These may be more directed towards Mr. Benton. So we talk about the cost savings to the taxpayers by minimizing the utility bills there at the park district. It also talked in there a little bit about that property where you're wanting to install those solar panels has been very minimal used over the years, other than maybe for some parking for different events. Has, and, and this is just kind of a curiosity question, so, uh, don't take this the wrong way, but has the park district ever considered selling that property or donating that property to the city so that it could be developed? And maybe put that on the tax rolls and bring in some property taxes, maybe some sales taxes? Has that ever been even entertained from the park or no?
Not since I've been here in, in the ten years. We do, as, as a perk district with the perk district code, um, we just cannot sell property. We, if it's over three acres of property, we have to go for a referendum to get resident approval to sell property. The only way, excuse me, the only way we could do a transfer of property to, say, the city or a school district or another governmental entity is that we would have to do basically a land swap. So the city would have to provide property of equal or greater value.
Like the Park District did with Pekin High School, Coal Miners Park.
Well, we leased that property.
Yeah, but wasn't there some property that was switched from?
I don't remember.
Fifth Street.
Gary? I am not familiar with that.
I know the city had, I know the District 103 or 303 had to pay for the concession stand.
Right. Now, we could, we could sell property to another governmental entity without doing a land swap, but it would have to remain for recreational-type purposes or, you know, conservation-type purposes. We would not be able to sell it to the city so that it could be developed with businesses.
If I could just interject.
Without having to go to a referendum.
Mayor, Nick can.
If I could just interject for a minute. Again, this is a permitted ground mount array. This is not a special use, so it is a permitted array.
Okay.
All we're discussing tonight is approval of the site plan.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just, you had asked about, you know, the twenty-five. That's also in the Park District Code. We can only do up to twenty-five-year lease or agreement with, for solar projects, so that's why that's at twenty-five years.
Okay. So you guys have an area over there close where the solar panels are going in where you have a burn pile and you burn limbs you cut down or whatever it may be. Is that still going to be allowed with those solar panels right next to that burn pile now?
No, we'll probably have to find another location for that if we continue to do that.
Okay, and if I understood correctly reading through that, and correct me if I'm wrong, so this will have a fence around the entire area of where the solar panels are?
Yes, right now we're-
And then it will have some sort of trees or shrubbery on the outside of the fence?
Right now, we're planting a six-foot-high fence, and then we're going to soften the appearance of the fence with plantings. We're not necessarily going to do a hedgerow, but, you know, kind of plantings on the corners and, you know, maybe intermediate, you know, in between the corners. And then through the ZBA, we also agreed, in our park board, in their discussions, I would like to see it too, we are going to do some tree plantings along Broadway, you know, north of it, you know, where it's not going to affect the panels. You know, just to try to soften, you know, that view as people are driving, you know, east on Broadway.
So there'll still be an area on the inside of that fence where all the solar panels are? Will somebody will have to go around each one of those individual solar panels and weed whack?
And that's their responsibility to-
Their responsibility for everything on the inside of it?
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
So it also says, as Nick just mentioned not too long ago, that this does not require a special use permit, but it shows that, I believe it was probably Clean Energy, looks like the applicant, paid a hundred and twenty-five dollars to fill out an application for a special use permit. Is that correct? So did you get reimbursed for that since there's no special use required?
No, but I appreciate the thought.
Well, I'm just curious why it was even filled out since there wasn't one required.
Well,
Okay, we can answer that. So originally with prior council, you know, we believed that it potentially required a special use. We explored other options, and then we ultimately brought it to the ZBA to make that determination, if it was a permitted ground mount of use or if it could be a special use.
Okay, and then it states, "On January eighth, two thousand twenty-five, the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing for a zoning variance."
So what you're reading, Rick, and I just caught that too, in Finding of Facts, I have an error on that page.
There wasn't no variance required either, right?
What you're reading is, I have an error in that Finding of Facts, that bold statement right there.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
That's exactly right.
And and then I'll go back to what also was just stated, since apparently I was getting off topic there a bit. So we're just voting to approve the site plan. Can somebody show me where the site plan is in this agenda packet that we're approving? I see a couple pictures of what it may look like. I don't see the original site plan that's supposed to be signed off on, and correct me if I'm wrong, by the building inspector, the fire chief, the city engineer, and anybody else that's required to sign off on those site-
Exhibit A under that item.
What, okay.
Are you finished?
No, I'm trying to find it.
Solicited a site plan parking exhibit A.
Okay.
Should be right after the application.
All mine shows is a picture.
You want to show?
I can go to the application, which is a different page. Right. Okay, where's all the people that, where's all the signatures from everybody that has to sign off on that?
At this point, it's site plan approval, right? So we haven't got into, I haven't seen engineer plans or anything. That's a whole staff review after this point. Again, this, my department could have approved this. We opted to bring it to ZBA due to the size and character of-
And we appreciate that.
This use.
Well, that's interesting to me. I thought all site plans that were brought to the council for approval had already been signed off on by the appropriate staff. So it doesn't matter whether we sign, or whether we approve this or not. If somebody in the staff doesn't sign off on it, then it's void, right?
So we don't have engineered plans yet, so-
You have the card before the horse.
The placement of the array.
So is that going to come back to us again for approval or no?
It wouldn't have to.
So then the engineering site plan can be completely different than what we're proving.
They're going to follow this layout.
I think that site plan is what we're trying to approve. We need to make sure that we're not trying to micromanage and-
But we also need to make sure what we're approving is the actual site plan, and that is not the case. We're approving a picture is the way I see it.
Mr. Hill, can we- Did you not say it was the site plan?
Can we just say something?
Sure.
So as part of the process of getting the project through city requirements, we've also submitted that identical plan to Ameren for an interconnection approval, which we received. We've also submitted that to the program that the state runs in overseas installation incentives and that. They've given approval and have given us approval on that. We wanted to make sure before we went into full-blown engineering that we were able to build it, because that's very expensive to put together. And if for some reason it hit a roadblock that didn't allow us to continue, then all of that engineering would have been wasted, basically. But it'll be a full-blown, identical to what you see with a one line. The electrical will all be laid out, and their department will approve that. It'll go through the normal building permit process for the department to approve it. And then once we're given a permit, then they'll obviously be responsible and will request inspections for the portions that are needed to be inspected by the city official.
Right, and I appreciate all that, I really do, but I'm just coming from a standpoint of us sitting up here as elected officials, and this isn't specific to you by any means. This is just overall, because we've had issues in the past with site plans, more than once, and several different issues, and it just-
Madam Mayor, I'd like to call for the- Yeah, this is, we're not issuing, we're not worrying about other issues that we used to have in the past. We've got a site plan that was presented to us, correct, legal counsel?
I think this is typical of other clients of ours, too. And as the gentleman said, it would make little sense that they have come here with an engineering plan and everything, tens of thousands of dollars before you've approved
Yeah.
the proof of concept site plan that they've, and you'd have an opportunity later if they, if it deviates to, you know, that will be addressed in the, pardon me, addressed in the appropriate manner. Now is not the time to go into this at this point.
Thank you, as I stated earlier.
Okay, then if they didn't need a special use permit, they didn't need a variance request, and they didn't need a rezoning,
Mr. Hill, you're out of order.
And everything they want to do is permitted in the code, why is it coming to us?
You are out of order.
For discussing an agenda item?
We just told you. You are micromanaging. You are to approve the site plan.
I am to approve the site plan. Is that what you just told me?
No, this, we are here to approve or disapprove the site plan. Excuse me if I said it wrong. Approve or disapprove. Call for the question, please. Mr. McQuett, do you have anything more that you would like to add? Mr. Reese.
Just for what it's worth, prior to this, going to the zoning board as staff, we did sit down on this. This wasn't the first one of its kind that we had here recently, where we got a lot of our technical questions answered and a better understanding, so it was pretty easy to look over. And at least from the fire department's side, at this phase, this seems on par.
Thank you very much. Counsel, take your vote, please. Motion passes six point zero. We have now come down to-
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, we appreciate you waiting for such a long time. Thank you. We have now come down to item eight point seven. This is a discussion of residential remodeling of incentive program. So are you going to be okay? Okay. Mr. Dossie, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask Mr. Josh Ray to speak on this.
Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the issues that perennially exists in economic and community development is the presence of blighted areas. This was discussed a little bit on Saturday as well. One of the concepts and purpose for establishing a TIF district is aimed at reducing blight through financially assisting improvement projects, whether they be public or private, to increase the value of that whole project area. The city's TIF districts do have blighted areas. That includes some residential areas that are run down, dilapidated, or abandoned, and renovating these properties is very costly, and most of the time for these, you know, particularly dilapidated buildings, renovation is just not profitable, so no one ends up taking on the projects, and then we have these blighted areas that just persist unless it gets to the point that they, you know, we have to emergency demolish one because it catches fire or something along those lines. The purpose of this discussion, I'm, is to talk about a new program that could be funded through the TIF fund. And it was born out of a local contractor who is here tonight, Dan Steinbach. I'd like to ask him in a little bit to kind of speak on what his thoughts were, but him and myself and Mr. McQuett talking about what do we do about these areas, because he sees some opportunity in being able to bring them back to life. But like we said before, a lot of times it's just not profitable. You know, we have to put two hundred thousand dollars into a project that is only going to end up being, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar property. So, you know, he's done many renovations in Pekin. I handed you all a packet before the meeting that he can maybe walk through a little bit. But, you know, it's not just about his proposals today. We're talking about kind of an overall policy. I did take this to EDAC to have some discussion. There were some reservations at first, understandably. I mean, what we don't want to do is just create a situation where we're just blindly, you know, increasing contractors' profits by offering this program. But, you know, EDAC did agree this could be a really good way to help diversify Pekin's housing stock and eliminate blight by assisting in some of these renovations. We have the new housing program that helps people build new houses on vacant lots. Those are often expensive. I mean, the cost to build a new small, single-family home these days is two hundred and twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's not affordable to a lot of people. So this is an opportunity to kind of diversify the housing stock, add a new section of housing available to the community if contractors start kind of taking on these projects with a little bit of help from the city. So tonight, we'd just like to hear your feedback. We'd like you to listen to Dan talk about his thoughts on some of the properties he's looked at, and then discuss some of the parameters that you all might like to see in a policy, you know, maximum dollar values, maximum cost shares. Do we need to come up with a really good definition to limit it to certain properties that, I think it'd be a good idea to limit it to properties that are, you know, what we don't want to do is just buy people out of homes that are okay and have people flip them for profits. You know, we want to actually be eliminating the blighted situations. Do we need to limit it to certain types of expenses, you know? So that's the whole goal tonight is just to talk about this, get your thoughts. And kind of my closing statement, if you will, is that if eliminating blighted residential areas and increasing viable housing options are goals of you all, the city council, I think that this is a program that you should consider, you know, putting some incentive in place to help people find a way to, you know, do a little bit better than break even when they take on these projects so that we can get some contractors to start taking them over. Otherwise, you know, it's just on the city to try to foreclose on them or wait till they catch fire, which we never want to do.
Yeah.
So that's where we're at. Any questions for me, or would you like Dan to speak?
Well, I know that, I was at that EDAC meeting along with one of the councilmen, Mr. Nutter was there, and I think there was a little bit of hesitation at first until you really dug into it. And I have told you, I told the council, or not the council, the members then, that I had personally, people come to me and say, I want to, I want to help clean up some of these dilapidated homes. Do you have a program? So this is much needed, and I appreciate it, and I'd love to hear from him if the rest of the council would like to hear. Hi.
Hello, my name's Dan Steinbach, and I've been doing these houses here in this town for about three years now. You guys all got the packets of the exact ones that I've done and purchased and bought. I just recently bought another one, and this is how it all got brought up. This is the lady at the desk when I was having it re-zoned, and I bought two properties to turn into one. She's the one that brought it up about it being in the TIF district, and I should check into it. So after talking with Nick and Josh, I came up with this idea. You can see some of the houses that we've done so far, and these are just the ones in Pekin. We do, I got houses in Tremok, Reef Court, Bartonville, and Washington as well. I got nineteen, I call it nineteen doors, nineteen pieces of property, fourteen houses, one apartment complex. That's five units. But these ones listed here are the ones just here in Pekin that we've done in the last couple of years. With doing it and bringing them up to code, it's not cost justified anymore because of what you have to do to bring it up to the new codes.
I'm sorry, is your microphone out? It's hard to hear you.
Is that better? Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
What I was saying is it's getting to be where it's not cost justified to do these remodels in Pekin anymore. And with some help, it could still be achievable. When you have to, when you look at some of these prices that I paid on these houses, you know, on average, it's close to a hundred thousand dollars that I'm putting into them. I've not flipped any of these houses. These are all rented out. So take the, you guys all got the pictures, right?
We do have pictures.
Okay, so you could see what the, and I hate talking in front of people, so I apologize.
We've all been there.
You see the examples, the before and afters of the fronts of the houses. Then you see an example of the inside where I titled Briar Cliff. That's how I redo every single house. Every single house that I do has those exact cabinets, the exact floor, exact paint, exact light fixtures, everything. I buy in bulk and then just duplicate the process on every house, from the siding to everything.
Smart thinking.
Well, it's one of the only ways- Well, it's one of the only ways that you can do it and try to break even. Yeah, you'll get your money back 15 years down the road renting it out, as long as nobody tears them up, but that's not always the case. And a lot of times, these houses that I've bought, they've been sitting in Pekin for, there was one house for 18 years. Never had no, didn't have a water meter, didn't have a gas meter. And I just, I'm guessing that the city's too busy and wasn't able, or didn't get complained on, or whatnot. So, I guess what I'm getting at is, there's lots of houses all around town that need reworked, and nobody wants to do it because it costs way too much money. By the time you buy the house, put the hundred grand into it, you know, you're looking at $110,000 to $140,000 for a house that you can never sell for more than $100,000. And that's particularly in Pekin, because I can do a house in Tremont, or Morton, or Bartonville, Washington, and not have to do what I have to do here in Pekin. There's a big difference. Each municipality is different in regards to how you have to redo the house. So, I guess that's why I'm here, is I'm just letting you guys know this is what I've done. And once I dug into it, I found out that the TIF qualifies for blighted areas, and all these houses that you see here are definitely in these areas.
Okay. Mr. Ray.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd just reiterate, you know, the purpose of establishing a TIF district is to get rid of blighted areas. There is, there's a whole TIF plan that's created for the area in order to even qualify to get into a TIF district. You know, there's a lot of parameters that need to be met, and a big portion of it is that the majority of the area needs to be blighted or dilapidated. So, I think this hits at the really core purpose of having them, especially on the residential side. It's pretty hard for the city to ever come up with a real return on investment in a short period of time. But if you think about it, once these are brought up to code, and as long as we enforce property maintenance codes and building codes like we have been, they'll be on the tax rolls for, you know, another whole useful life of the house, you know, 50, 100 years. So, I think it's a good program that could be looked at. We need to make sure we got some good language in there that, you know, people aren't, people don't end up flipping, you know, $100,000 profits, and they, they didn't need any city money to begin with. So, we'll mitigate some of those concerns in the, in particular language that we would bring back to you all to approve a policy. And then again, moving forward, anytime a TIF agreement for a particular property is, is brought up, it has to come before council. So, you'll, you'll still get a look at every single property, just like you do for the, the new, new house program.
Okay. Okay, well, as this states, it's just discussion, so we are not taking a vote on anything tonight. Do you have any comments?
Can I say something else?
Sure.
As you can see in my notes, you know, here in the last five years, you see that what I've spent on houses just here in Pekin, and the total cost I have within the last five years. I have not flipped any of these houses. Like I said, they're all rented out. We don't, I don't just do that. I also do a lot of insurance work and jobs for some companies like Blue Sky, Paul Davis, and Servpro. But I wanted to point out one house that in particular that we just did, which Nick checked out, that's how we do all our work. And we did that house. It was a customer. It was a State Farm job. Their house caught on fire in August. And they reached out to me. I put them in one of our rentals that we had. And within 87 days, from the time of their loss to a complete house fire, this was from a ground-up remodel. They were moving back on their, into their home in 87 days, which is unheard of. But that's the way we do every house. And I employ a lot of people, use different companies, all local as well, so, on the stuff that I can't do. Because you have to do it.
How many do you employ?
Five.
Very good.
And then, on these jobs where certain things that we're not allowed to do, like electrical, for example, you know, I bring in somebody like David Cassidy, or just other licensed contractors in Pekin. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Can you tell me how much rental property you have in the city of Pekin, and...
The list is right there, but I believe I have...
That's all you have in Pekin is rental, right here?
Well, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven houses and one apartment complex. That's got five units in Pekin.
And you always rent, you never sell?
Yeah, we haven't sold any.
How many, across your whole gamut of operations that you have rental properties?
Right now, as of today, 20. 15 houses, one apartment complex. That's five units.
Okay. I'm sure I'll have a bunch of questions today, and he'd answer later. Could take a lot of thought on this.
All right.
Something else I want to point out is, I still own another business here in town that's up for sale, that did qualify for the TIF. And I, I've never asked for anything. And I've, that business that I could have easily came to and probably gotten the TIF. It's on Derby Street as well, but I remodeled that whole thing by myself. So, this is out of the norm for me to come and ask for something like this, so, just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, yeah, I just want to reiterate, this isn't just about Mr. Steinbach's ideas tonight. You know, I'm really looking for your feedback on, would you be interested in this kind of program? Because I don't want myself and the EDAC, and, you know, ultimately, Mr. Steinbach or other contractors that are gonna put effort into an application or proposal, if it's just not something you're interested in. So, are you interested? What kind of parameters would you like to see if it were somebody that were looking to buy one of these houses and ultimately sell it? I mean, you can consider things like profit sharing, where they have to give the city then 50% of whatever profit is made, you know, stuff like that. So, I'd like to get your feedback tonight.
Well, as I had stated, I have had more than just this gentleman come forward and say, "Do you have a program? Is there something, you've got dilapidated, blighted homes that I'd like to fix up, but is there any kind of help that we can get to help beautify your city?" So, it's out there. The need is there. That's my opinion.
Yeah, and I think one other thing is, I know Nick hears it all the time, too. People assume that the city can do something about every one of these properties. Like, what is the city doing about this? And a lot of the times, it's not much, because there's no owner, there's nobody to go after. It's one reason we're trying to do the vacant building registry. So, this is a good solution, I think, aside from the city just trying to take control of properties.
I agree. Anyone else?
Well, I would just like to make a comment. Tina's in here because I was bringing her up, because we have the CDBG program, which is for owner-occupied, where we can do a lot of CDBG work with the owner-occupied structures, which, to me, that's the best way of going, to keep them owner-occupied.
That was brought up...
Lloyd, we did talk about that Saturday as well, yeah.
Yeah, but that's why I'm kind of missing that Tina's not here, because I remember when we redid the Mill and Overlay on 14th Street, the homes that met CDBG qualifications, I can't recall exactly, but the CDBGs put new windows in them or something on 14th Street. I can't remember exactly. But there was a lot of CD where the homes that were eligible, they all went and did them at that time, when the owner occupied.
I mean, it's conceivable, I'd have to talk with Tina, but it's conceivable that you could kind of set a policy, and CDBG could be another funding source for this type of program, where it could be some TIF money, some CDBG. The CDBG would help make more areas eligible, because, as you know, the TIFs are geographic, so if the house isn't in the TIF, it wouldn't qualify. But it could qualify under CDBG, because it's an LMI, you know, low-income individual, or a low-to-mother income area. One thing with CDBG that makes it more particularly difficult is because then you have to follow a lot of federal procurement requirements,
Red tape.
Which brings the cost of the project up and the timeline. That's one reason that TIF is sometimes nicer, but that's an excellent point.
But the best thing about it is they're owner-occupied. And people living in a home are more likely to be good citizens than the, I don't want to sound derogatory, but they're just better for the family and everything in an owner-occupied house. I'm sure the legal community agrees with me.
Well, and I think, you know, one consideration, you might like the poli, you know, you personally might like the policy for homes that are gonna end up being single-family homes that are owned, and you could still appreciate the policy. And then, if somebody comes up for a rental, you might vote no, but it's still a good program.
Well, I also don't want to see a lot of our, more percentage of our property in the city becoming rental property, because I don't know what the figure is now. Do you have any idea what the residential rental property is?
I should.
That'd be good to know. Okay, that's all I have. Like I said, I got a lot of thinking to do, and I'll be getting back with Josh and Nick. Thank you.
I think there's some opportunities out there. Yes, Mr. Nutter?
Mr. Steinbach, thank you, number one, for the documentation versus just standing there and say, "I bought some houses," because some of these pictures on here are amazing. And I think one of these might have been, was Pine Street an issue in...
So, those apartments are right next door to the one that we currently have.
Okay, okay. Didn't remember the address.
Which I've already talked to Nick. I'd like to buy that when the time comes.
But thank you for bringing it forward. I'm like Councilmember Oric. I want to look through this. I do have a couple of concerns that I'll talk to Josh about. Not pertains to you and what you're doing, but the governmental side of it. So, thanks again for bringing it forward, and hopefully, we can work something out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Any other counsel? Oh, Mr. Abel, I'm sorry.
Just one comment, that the Pine Street apartment, I thought that was next to the one we've had some issues with with the city. So, I'm glad to hear you're interested in it. And I know some people live on that street. It's a very nice neighborhood, and they've been looking at that eyesore forever. And it's always, the owner, back to court, another extension, another extension, another extension. They see kids running out of there. It's an attractive hazard, I'll put it that way, for kids and whatever else. I'm sure there's drugs there and every kind of varmint in the world. But the neighbors will be very happy to see your kind of work coming in there. I hope you, hope you get that.
So do I.
Thank you.
It's about a third, Mr. Oric. About a third of the, of the homes in Pekin are rental. It's higher than average.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah, unless there's just any other feedback, or I'm happy to talk with council members offline. I guess, there seems to be interest, so I'll start working on a policy. I know Mr. Steinbach's eager to get started, so I'll start working on a policy. At the next EDAC meeting, we'll talk about it, and hopefully, have something for the next council meeting as well.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Any other business to come before the council, Mr. Dossi?
Sorry, no. I think we'll pass it up to council after the long weekend.
Yes, indeed. I'm not gonna come up here to council, because we have executives. So, is everyone okay with that, or is there something pending that someone wants to say?
No, I've got a couple of things I'd like to say. Thank you. And I'm gonna start out with what was just stated earlier about calling the vote. So, that's fine and dandy if you don't want to listen to me talk up here, and you want to cut me off and stifle me, but you need to go about it the right way. And you can't just have one person call a vote and stop me from talking. That takes a second from somebody on the council. And if you get that second, that takes a vote from the entire council, and it takes a two-thirds of approval from the vote. If you get that vote, then you can call that. So, I'm gonna move on.
I did not go on from her. I said, "Council, take your vote."
So, I've had a few conversations with several people in a particular neighborhood that apparently experienced scheduled Amarin shut-off for about 12 hours or so. And apparently, it affected, I don't know, over 100 people. So, one of the main questions that kept me frustrated about that is, do we have any language in our Amarin franchise agreement that requires them to notify these people before they just shut their power off if it's a scheduled shut-off? Because apparently, nobody was contacted about that on a cold early morning when everybody was getting their kids ready for school.
I don't believe, I'll have to go pull and look at it. I don't believe we do. I do know that we reached out. We literally just were provided with a new liaison into Amarin. I did immediately reach out to her, and they were made aware of the issue and addressed it from there. So, but I'll go and I'll pull the...
So, if we don't have any language in that, would that be something that we need to amend and update and get that language in there?
I don't know what the process would be for that, so I'll have to do some inquiry on it and look into it.
Because there was another comment made about that, where a lot of these people that are behind on their payments, and they get so far behind on their payments that they get their power shut-off, they've got laws that those people have to be contacted before they shut their power off, even though they're behind on their bills. And these people are saying, "We're paying our bills, and we're not getting contacted. Shouldn't we get the same courtesy?" So, I just want to throw that out there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Was there anyone that had to say something?
Number one to the chief of police, I noticed in this morning's paper, Washington Police Department put out their yearly report. And are you, are you gonna make a yearly report what they have? I don't know if you're aware of it, but it's front page of the Journal Star. I thought it was very interesting to let us know what our city is like when it comes to violations and everything else.
I'm sorry. We're, we're putting out the quarterly reports right now, and the intention is for that to become the annual report citywide, once we get that completed. So, I don't know if you've looked at them or seen those yet.
Yeah.
But yeah, and any input of information that you'd like to see on there?
I just like, I thought the city of Washington was great. It's, like I said, it's front page of this morning's Journal Star.
Right.
If you want to, I'd love to see something like that from the police department. And then, the second one, I was contacted on a code violation. An elderly woman got a code violation stuck on her door, and due to her condition, she had no idea what to do. She was supposed to come to this hearing, or she could get fined. Is there any way we can possibly put...
Are you referring to the letter that went out to all the council from Mr. Dancy?
Yeah.
So, there's more to that story. This goes back spring, summer of last year. So, I, if you want to come in and have a conversation, I'd be more than happy to sit down and have code enforcement, the chief of police involved there in that conversation. But it's something that's been ongoing for some time, and I'll let them explain it a little bit further as far the detail goes.
Well, and I'm just thinking that there's probably numerous ones that would face those same circumstances that we might not even hear from, you know, that we have some kind of...
Right. And as I've always said, there's two sides to the story. And I think it's important that, you know, if you have those questions, come in, let's sit down, hear the other side of it. Because a lot of, a lot of times, you'll get the complaints, too, and then we'll have the body camera footage that shows something completely different happen. Or we end up finding out that there's something that's been ongoing for some period of time. And, you know, I think there's another side to the story on this one.
I concur 100%. You don't make a decision before you get both sides. Okay, thank you. That's all I...
Before we go on to item 10, which is executive session, Madam Clerk, I want you to note that Mr. Onkin was able to join us. Okay, thank you. Chair would now entertain a motion for item 10, executive session.
Madam Mayor, I move that council moved to executive session five, ILCS 120 slash 2C6, the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Onkin, and second by Mr. Abel. Yes, and we will not be voting, so there's no need to see that we will have a vote as we come out of executive. Counsel, take your vote. We are now up. I jumped the gun. Motion passes seven zero. We are now in executive session at 8:00 PM.